There's only one thing that I get right every time, and that's six o'clock.
Somewhere at six o'clock, maybe not here, but somewhere.
Somewhere it is. Are we good? Do I need to wang that gavel again? Okay, good. So I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission, January fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Metters, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, so we have a quorum. In fact, we have a full commission tonight. So we'll move to item C, the consent calendar, which I don't believe we have any issue with this evening. Can we move forward with voting on that?
I make a motion, we accept the December seventh minutes as printed.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'd like to amend that motion to include the November sixteenth study session.
It's, it's in there.
I said December seventh.
Oh, okay, got it. That's part of the consent calendar though. Okay, so are we good? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain from the December seventh one, because I wasn't here, even though I could vote for it, just to keep things straight. An aye on the November sixteenth. Okay, so we've cleared that. Let's move forward to item D, which is public hearings. Go to D one. This is a request by Craig Heisling Brown Homes on behalf of CGX Life Sciences. Pardon? Commissioner Metters is gonna recuse herself for this item. Thank you for reminding me. Okay, this is a request on, by Craig Heisling Brown Homes on behalf of CGX Life Sciences for the approval of a conditional use permit for a temporary model home complex or property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Perkinsville East, Perkinsville Road, and North Road One East. Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty. Well, good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the request for a conditional use permit for a temporary home, sorry, temporary model home complex at Perkinsville forty-four. Our applicant is in attendance tonight. So the subject property is approximately forty-four acres located at the intersection of East Perkinsville Road and North Road One East. Adjacent to the property, to the south of the property, is Chino Valley Aquatic Center, and to the east of the property is Bonnie Plant Farms. Currently on the property is a single, sorry, an abandoned, single-family residence and several agricultural buildings. So the proposed model home sales office will be located on lot seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven of the property, which is within phase one of the Perkinsville forty-four subdivision. These structures will be built first before the subdivisions go up, or sorry, before the subdivision goes up. The sales office will be located on lot seventy-six, in the garage portion of the structure, and the sales office will later be reverted back to its original intended use as a functional garage. Lot seventy-seven will be a sales parking lot, and it will also later be, later be reverted back into its original intended use of a model home. So I have here on this slide some artist renderings of what those model home complexes will look like. The image on the left will be what lot seventy-five will be, and the image on the right will be what lot seventy-six will be. So the surrounding property owners were notified of the date and location of this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, as well as the town council meeting, by a postcard on November tenth. But no neighborhood meeting was held because the conditional use permit was in line with what was proposed in the subdivision. To this date, no public comments have been received. Mr. Wildin G R, Senior Planner, will be taking over the presentation from this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bethan. Good evening Chair and Commission. I wanted to touch base on the conditions that are being proposed to be attached to this conditional use permit. We did send out the staff report with a set seven stipulations. We are going to be modifying those. We're proposing a modification to those in items one, two, and three. And number one, we are proposing that we remove the sewer line portion in here, and then we're gonna actually include that as a separate standalone stipulation. As worded, a certificate of occupancy will not be given for the model home complex until sewer lines are constructed in accordance with approved plans and approved through Town of Chino Valley and Yavapai Development Services. This stipulation was requested by the applicant, so he can begin vertical construction before all of the utility lines are constructed. However, occupancy of these structures will not be permitted or granted by the town until that sewer line has essentially received authorization for discharge. I believe Frank can touch base a little bit on why this ask was presented, and why it makes sense and why staff can support this. And then on number three, we just made a quick, or a modification to that. Instead of all access roads, it's all required emergency access roads. Must have a minimum dust-free surface. Since there will be construction going on before the subdivision, all of the streets, utilities, sidewalks are put in. We want to ensure that fire flow can, or fire access and medical access can be granted safely and sufficiently. And so we're making sure that it is clear that we're talking emergency access opposed to all roads within the subdivision. With that being said, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to Town Council for the conditional use permit for the temporary home complex with the modified stipulations before the commission. And if you have any questions regarding that, we're here for that.
Thank you, Will. Any of the Commissioners have any questions for this, for the staff? Okay, so just to be clear, you'll be able to put the buildings up? They won't be able to be occupied till the sewer is hooked up and commissioned and approved through Chino Valley and the county?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the emergency access roads will be in position throughout construction? Or just before the homes are occupied?
Before construction. So anytime, go back up here. Within stipulation number one, no vertical construction or storage of combustible material shall occur on site. So once they start storing wood for their homes, there needs to be fire protection or the ability to provide fire protection on site. So at the time, once they start storing materials on site, those roads will need to be in.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions? All right.
Then the applicant is here, if you would like to hear, or if you would like to touch base on that tonight as well.
Thank you, Will. So the next step is if the applicant would like to come up and speak for a minute, he certainly may do that. He does not have to do that. When you step up to the microphone, please state your name.
Ashley Galgano.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. I know Craig's name was on there, but I actually put together the whole packet. So any questions that you may have regarding the model home complex, I'm more than welcome. I can explain or answer.
Any of the Commission have any questions for the applicant? Ma'am, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Well, we're excited. Thank you.
Good. Looking forward to the project.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public portion of this meeting for this item D. Would anybody in the public like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing as how nobody wants to do that, we're gonna close the public portion. Okay, does anybody on the Commission have any questions for town staff? Nope. Okay, so there was no public response. We'll pass that one up. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve conditional use permit C dash twenty-one dash zero-two as presented, subject to the staff report and the updated stipulations from staff dated January four, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
My second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Would somebody please ask Commissioner Metters to come in? Okay, so we're gonna, we have no action items, is that correct? I don't see anything listed. Okay, moving forward with item F one from the staff. First one is council action on prior P and Z cases.
So we have not had a council meeting since last P and Z meeting in December. The case that was presented before either Roscoff rezoning will be going forward at the end of this month. And then the SR zero-point-one-six tabling or relocating will be going next council meeting next Tuesday. So no update yet, but you will have an update next one in February.
All right, thank you. So on item F two, there is a couple of things I'd like to run by. I know that we're talking about eliminating the one-six zoning, and I'm just gonna throw this out there for a little bit of discussion about whether or not we want to remove this tool from our usage or just extremely limit it. And if you would, one of the two of you, give us some education on that. This was brought to me by somebody that asked the question, and I thought it was worth bringing up just for some discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the idea is that we move this and locate it in a place where we cannot use it. If you look at the purpose statement, the purpose statement of this zoning classification is, it says, "There shall be no new zoning designations, no new areas with this zoning designation." So we, we are moving it to a place that is not usable, because we're calling it an outdated district. Now, in the meantime, what we're doing is the quarter acre, half acre lots, that's what we're gonna work on next, is coming up with either ten, eleven, or twelve thousand square foot lots, which is a little bit bigger than the seven, but it's not an acre, and a half acre, which is twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, or twenty-four. You guys are gonna talk about this tonight. And so we'll have those new tools in our toolbox while we're working on the general plan. And when the general plan gets done, that's gonna be twelve, eighteen months' worth of work. In that effort, they're going to be identifying different densities of single-family and multifamily zoning, and they'll be recommending different categories for zoning districts for us. And so when we get done with the general plan, the idea is that we have the tools ready for us to have smaller lots. But it will also have a better roadmap for us for where these should be located. Right now, the general plan is pretty broad. We, it's like we have a really intricate painting, and we used a four-inch wide paintbrush, and we really needed one of those things that looks like a toothpick. And so we have wide swaths of areas that say, oh, we can do all these things. But when you get down and you look at them, sometimes it doesn't really work. And so the idea with the new general plan is that we figure out what areas higher density really works, and what should those densities be, and then the districts will grow out of that. So it's, it's just a short period of time where we don't have the seven thousand, but we will have ten, eleven, or twelve, depending on what you guys decide. So it's not like we're saying you can't have anything under an acre, you can.
So if somebody comes forth with a, with a high-density subdivision, at this point, they wouldn't be able to be accommodated until the general, the new general plan is in position and approved.
That is correct.
Okay, and you're looking at a year and a half approximately.
That is correct.
Okay. But at that point, we will have something where we can have high density?
Yes.
Because at some point,
Yes.
working folks are gonna have to be able to have a place they can build a home and
Absolutely.
without some of these smaller lot subdivisions, that's pretty hard to do.
Well, we'll probably have some higher density than you've seen before. But it will be in specific places that make sense.
Yes, and that's downstream after the general plan has been tuned up.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now we're supposed to talk about the half and quarter acre?
Yes, sir. Our goal tonight is for us to get a consensus from you, the Commission, on the square footage of the quarter acre and the half acre, and the minimum lot width. So we had this discussion last time. Pretty much you guys were in even split about how it was gonna shake out. So in the meantime, Will and I have done some more work, and Will is going to share some of that information with you, and hopefully that'll help with some dialogue, and we can come to consensus tonight so that we can start working on that ordinance and get it back to you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Lori. Alrighty, so as Lori introduced, you guys were pretty split last time as far as where the direction to staff was as far as lot size. It was about three on the smallest end of the recommendations, and then three on the largest end of the recommendations. So hopefully we'll be able to kinda come to at least a majority of sorts tonight to provide staff so we can get an ordinance rolling or a text amendment going together. So kinda starting off here with the quarter acre lots, the diagram in front of you is, really breaks down what the road frontage, the street frontage for each lot would look like for a ten thousand square foot lot here. On the left-hand side, you have a seventy-foot frontage for each lot minimum, and then on the right side, you have an eighty-foot frontage. Within the seventy-foot frontage section, lots, in order to get ten thousand square feet, would have to have a hundred and forty-two point eight-six feet of depth. There would be approximately thirty feet of separation between homes. And then for every four hundred and twenty feet of distance traveled down a road, you can have up to twelve homes, six on either side of the road. With an eighty-foot frontage situation on a ten thousand square foot lot, all lots would be a hundred and twenty-five foot of depth in order to get the minimum frontage requirement met. You'd have approximately forty feet of separation between homes, and then you'd be looking at, right at ten homes, it's a little more, because you have some of the lot from the homes down a little further, every four hundred and twenty feet traveled. As we continue with the quarter acre discussion, here are some examples with the twelve thousand square foot determination. If you run seventy on the left and then eighty on the right for frontage, for seventy, roughly a hundred and seventy feet of depth, still thirty feet of separation between homes and twelve feet, or twelve homes for every four hundred and twenty feet traveled. You're, essentially what this is really depicting is that as you maintain that seventy square feet, or seventy feet of frontage, but you're increasing that square foot of lot, you're just getting a very long backyard or elongating, you're essentially back area. And then on the eighty-foot frontage, each lot must be right at a hundred and fifty foot depth, and then you have approximately forty feet of separation between there, and then ten homes every four hundred and twenty feet traveled. So in addition to this, tried to find some real-life examples that we can kinda tie this to of what this looks like as you travel down the street. For the life of me, I could not find any subdivision in the area, Quad City area of Prescott, Prescott Valley, Dewey, and Chino Valley that has a seventy square foot, or seventy-foot frontage requirement. So the closest I can get here is eighty within Chino Meadows Unit Two here, to where you, this is essentially how it would be depicted on any development going forward with an eighty-foot frontage, no matter what lot size you go with, whether it's the ten, the eleven, or the twelve. You'll roughly have this going down the road. This is what you'd see visually. Within town, we don't have anything that's the seventy-foot frontage. We do have several developments with the fifty, fifty-five, and sixty square foot frontage within Heritage, or sorry, Heritage, Highlands Ranch and Bright Star, but nothing in between there to give a good depiction of that. So I apologize, I don't have a good visual representation there. Before I get into the half acres, why don't we discuss the quarter acres and kinda just see where your head is, what you're thinking, and we can get some, maybe some dialogue going on that end.
Will, did you want me to hand this out?
Yes, please. And Lori's gonna be passing around a list, or a table set for the eleven, or ten, eleven, twelve thousand square foot lots, and the twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-four thousand square foot lots. As far as what the frontage, the length, and then we have a section of code currently that prohibits lots being greater than a three-to-one ratio. So essentially, you can't have a lot size greater than three times the length, or three times the depth or the width. So if you have a hundred square, or a hundred foot of frontage lot, it can't be greater than three hundred feet deep. So this list kinda gives you some parameters as to where these lots can lay. On the quarter acre ones, we really don't run into that issue with the suggested lot frontages, but we do run into some issues within the half acre realm. And those ones that we run into issues on are outlined, are actually represented in red. That per code with our current lot planning section, section five-point-three-point-three, sorry, five-point-three-point-seven-C would not allow lot frontages essentially within seventy to eighty-five on half acre lots.
But we can, we don't have to have the same lot frontage for half or quarter, they could be different.
Correct.
Okay. From a economic standpoint, the narrower the lot frontage, the better, because less roads.
Less, yeah.
But from the usability of the property and the proportion, could we go back to the last? There you go. So the, the main benefit of the wider frontage is the lot's not quite as deep and possibly a little more visually appealing.
Correct.
The good side of the skinny frontage is that you've got a bigger backyard and the neighbors a little farther away. And I'm not certain I understand the thirty-foot and the forty-foot separation from homes, because that's not a side-to-side separation, is it?
So that's based on this picture, or the diagram in front of you. Essentially, with how our setbacks are currently written, the home will, within the seventy-foot frontage, you'll have separation of a minimum of twenty feet, all the way up to sixty feet. So depending upon where that home sits, from sidewall to sidewall, could be as close as twenty.
So what is the side setback for the building envelope from the property?
Ten feet.
Okay. So you could be within ten feet.
And plus your neighbor's ten feet.
Right, I mean, ten feet of your property.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions or discussion on this?
I, I have a comment. This is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. This is, from what your diagram shows, it looks like you're doing this for subdivision.
Correct. So this would be a, a proposed subdivision development, correct.
And what would be the impact of a person that just has one acre that wants to split it?
So it would be similar, because they'd be still held to those same standards of a ten-yard, ten-foot setback on the sides. They'd still be held to the seventy-foot frontage, and then whatever the required depth would be to ensure that they have the minimum.
Except that if it's ten thousand square foot for a lot, he'd have the availability of four lots, and if it's twelve thousand, he'd only have the availability of three.
Correct. So to kinda caveat that as well, once you go, there, there's several distinctions that separate a land split between a subdivision. So splitting a property is typically two to three lots if you're not creating a road. Anything over three lots, or if you're creating a road or an easement access to, essentially act as a street for frontage, that automatically kicks you into a subdivision.
So I guess what I would like to have available, if somebody splits an acre lot, I don't think it's all that critical that they get four lots. If it says quarter acre, that's a little bit of a misnomer, but all of them are that way.
Absolutely.
And to get three lots out of an acre, I think that's not a bunch of heartburn for me, really. And we're never gonna be able to split a half, an acre lot into four parts and have that road access and that sort of business, even if we didn't jump into the subdivision category, there's not enough room.
Correct.
So a person with one acre, they just get their three lots. They don't wanna be a developer, so that's good.
Yep.
And you're not allowing flags? So if somebody had their house sitting, a wider mobile or a ranch-style house that took up the majority of their frontage, and they wanted to divide it and put another house in the back, you're not allowing flags to put a road to go to the back?
We would allow flags so long as they meet the net usable. So last time we discussed that whenever we throw that flag lot in there, you'd lose a lot of acreage through that road, because that's retained as your net acreage. If you can make it work, I, I believe that would be fine. Our, our real intention would be to not have that, but if there's a situation, we can approach it to where we, that it, that it works and it meets these criterias, and the net usable for where the actual home is being placed and not that flag pole, that would be something we could entertain.
Because basically, if somebody had like a hundred and fifty-foot wide lot in a, you know, seventy-five, eighty-foot wide house, they're not gonna be able to split it and get a seventy-five, a seventy-foot frontage so that you have your ten foot on each side. But they could take a driveway down their property line to the back.
Yeah, so long as they meet the, the
Still ten foot from the road.
Ten-foot setback, yep, and then the net usable of where that home is actually being placed, I, I absolutely think that's something we could entertain.
But does the road count as part of the square footage for the back house then?
So when you say road, are you talking the flat, the drive?
The driveway.
So that would not count towards, so it's still retained as your net acreage as, it, it's part of your property. It's part of your, your acreage. For the way that we are writing this, a fifty-foot flag pole, and our code currently states it can be up to three hundred and thirty feet wide, you're losing ten to fifteen thousand square feet of, or sorry, fifteen hundred square feet of lot acreage to that flag pole. So that's not counted as part of your net usable that we discussed last time.
Flag pole has to be fifty foot wide?
Correct.
Not twenty-five?
Current code is fifty foot width.
Even though it's not a subdivision, it still has to be fifty?
Correct.
It just had to be twenty-five so that garbage and fire trucks could get in there?
No, current code is fifty-foot wide flag poles.
Because that's a two-lane road. If it's going to a private residence, they don't need two lanes.
So if that's something we wanna discuss as a text, absolutely, but current code is fifty foot in width for a flag pole. And that's unfortunately the only direction I have on that for code.
Because the subdivisions, you know, you're not seeing that in subdivisions.
No, so you don't see flag poles and subdivision, or flag lots and subdivisions, because they're only allowed within land splits. So in, in a subdivision setting, you do not see a flag pole.
There's a flag pole in Heritage up there, that brown homes on Four North, that one.
So those are cul-de-sac lots, and they've got a different frontage requirement outside of the flag pole requirement.
Because that was my thing about that whole plot, was I was complaining that, that one in that southeast corner, if they ever had to move a septic tank or something, or because of the wells on the two properties, that flag was not going to have room to, you know, if they needed to redo their leach lines or anything, there was not going to be room on that, because the majority of their property was the driveway.
Good. Yeah, so cul-de-sac, the way we measure frontage within code, there's some nuances in there that give benefit to cul-de-sac lots to make sure that their frontage requirements are met. Frontage in a cul-de-sac setting is measured setback line back plus twenty feet. So essentially, if you have a pie-shaped lot, you essentially, and you've got a twenty-foot setback, you actually go forty foot back and you measure the arc length, and that's their total frontage. So that's why they're able to get the pie-shaped lots back there, and they make cul-de-sac lots work. In a flag pole setting or flag lot setting, our code only allows them within land splits and not a platted subdivision. So you wouldn't see that option. You wouldn't see a true flag lot within a subdivision setting, because those provisions are only allowable per our code within a land split through a record of survey.
I've seen two of them here in town, so I know that there are two of them at least. I've seen two of them here in town, so I know that there's, there are two of them at least.
Sure, yeah. There you go.
Yeah, non-conforming lots?
It's, it's very possible, um, yeah.
I can't imagine a non-conforming.
That has never happened here in Chino Valley.
Basically, this is showing like the frontage being the length of the property, whereas if somebody's already got an acre lot and they're dividing it, it's not going to be, the strip would be more.
It could be hodgepodge, um.
It'd be more of a, like quilt blocks instead of a linear.
Yeah, it could very well be, um, but that's essentially what we're discussing tonight, how you, if you would want that to work, uh, minimum frontage requirements on that. So.
Cause basically you could take, well, then that would be a separate road, right?
Correct.
If you took a square and did a quilt block, took the road up the center and everybody had an it.
Yeah, correct, that would be a subdivision at that point.
Considered a cul-de-sac then?
Yep, it's cul-de-sac which would require subdivision, so if you have to create some sort of easement, some sort of road, some sort of strip of land that will provide frontage for these lots, you have to go through a subdivision. Now, we have provisions in our code for.
Even if there's only three?
Correct, if you're creating a road, you have subdivision no matter what. Um, we have provision in our code, if you're doing ten lots between essentially ten and two and with a new road, it's called a minor subdivision, and so there are some reduced impacts, you don't have to do a full drainage study or traffic study. Most of the time it's just a statement from an engineer that says, you're not gonna flood out your neighbor, you're not gonna flood out your, your property, you've got no traffic concerns, you're not gonna need a right turn, like, you know, things like that. So i- it essentially lessens those requirements and provides these individuals who only wanna split four or five times with a new road, a lessened requirement to go forward, and we did that recently with our subdivision rewrite back in September of twenty. And that was a really fun time, um, but yeah, so we have that in- enacted to where individuals, if they wanted to do a smaller lot subdivision, they have a reduced standards compared to the Heritage Point, the Perkinsville Forty-four, the Bright Stars of Chino.
So basically with this kind of a scenario, the only people that are gonna be able to split lots into quarter acre lots would be somebody that has a long frontage along a pre-existing road.
Through a land split, correct, yes.
Okay, so. My inclination is for the wider frontage in a, a shorter lot. But I see advantages to both ways, maybe for a land split, the narrower frontage gives more opportunities for somebody. Is there any other way for that to be available if somebody came in with an existing situation?
So once we set this as far as what we want our minimum lot, our, our lot square footage and lot minimum to be, that start, that's set in stone through zoning districts. Um, there's always that, I, I hate to recommend doing a planned area development for a very small rezone like that.
Right.
To where they can have separate, um, special circumstances, but tha- that's usually not the right vessel to do that. Um, another thing to consider too, once you get under an acre, you start talking wa- town water and town sewer requirements. Um, anything under an acre, you can't have a well and septic on, so once you start getting this lo- this low, you're gonna be limited to a lot of where the utilities are, um, and you're also gonna be extending utilities to these lots as well.
So this really isn't gonna benefit the guy that's got twenty-one acre lots scattered around town to split it up, because at that point, if it's less than an acre, he's out of business anyways as far as if he's not near town water and sewer.
Correct, he can't get that.
So let's leave that out of the discussion, cause it really doesn't belong in the discussion. Well, I guess I'd like to hear everybody say what they would like if, if they have a preference between the eighty foot or the seventy foot frontage. Cause that seems to be the biggest issue.
The frontage and then what our square footage for these lots are gonna be. Um, the diagrams that I have for the quote, quote unquote quarter acre lots are ten thousand and twelve thousand, but you could do ten thousand, eleven thousand, you know, a- any sort of combination in there that fits best for what you guys see.
I would like to see maximum square footage.
Okay.
If you're proposing to sell a quarter acre lot or a half acre lot, needs to be a quarter acre lot or half acre lot.
So we don't have to stick with the co- quarter, I'm just using that as a term for something that's smaller than a half acre and then half acre.
Correct, you'd be calling them, you wouldn't be calling them.
No, so it would be, if, if we chose a ten thousand square foot lot, it would be SR ten thousand, that's how it would be presented. So this is, it's just a nickname.
I would still prefer B, I mean, personally, I don't even prefer quarter acre lots in Chino, but if you're gonna go that route, if it's gonna happen no matter what, then I would like to see maximum lot frontage.
Sure.
Maximum square footage.
Okay.
Yeah, same here, especially if the tools will be available after the general plan is approved to do things that are smaller than that. I, I agree with that, because I believe that I think we need to stay with as big of a lot size as possible for each designation, that would be my, my inclination. Um, we can certainly take a vote on it or whatever, we feel like we need to do as a commission, everybody offer their opinion and if we have a consensus, we just say that's it. Or we can vote, whichever way you would like to have it.
Sure, um, I, I had teed it up to where we talk the quarter acre first, um, if we wanna just, if we could get direction, that staff could get direction on that and then we can talk half acre.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll stick with the quarter acre, the quote unquote quarter acre designation. We'll just go down the line, everybody say what they want.
Yes, I like the wide front.
I would say the twelve thousand with the eighty foot frontage.
Twelve thousand eighty?
Okay.
Twelve thousand eighty.
Twelve thousand eighty.
I'm, I'm, I'm not happy with the twelve thousand eighty.
Can we have more discussion?
There's, there's no point, I, I'm only one person in.
But I would suggest that if you explain, it might educate us some.
Well. It's, it's just that when you're looking at, I, I don't know, maybe it's just me.
And it is a, last meeting, it, it wasn't unanimous at all, it was half and half without you here Chuck, so minds have changed, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so going with the consensus, which I believe the wider frontage to me is a positive. Um, just because a deep backyard doesn't have much attraction for me personally, but that's just my personal opinion. Um, I think that that's what I would like to see, although I will say, as I said before, for the developer, the seventy foot frontage makes sense because he's getting bigger bang for the road and for the utilities, et cetera. But in a tighter lot size, i.e. after the new deal is approved, we can deal with that through that fashion. So in my opinion, I'm gonna stick with the eighty foot frontage and twelve hundred square foot.
I think the twelve thousand eighty.
I mean, twelve thousand.
Aesthetically. I mean, it's not only visual, it's physical, that it creates more space between homes and that fits in more with the UDO and the town, town's vision.
Especially the forty feet separation.
Rural Chino, I mean, it's.
Chino homes. Yeah.
It's in line more, I think with.
Alrighty, well, thank you for that.
Do we need a vote?
Nope.
Nope, on that, we'll.
So our recommendation is twelve thousand square foot lots and eighty foot frontage.
Thank you, alrighty, let's tackle the quote unquote half acre. So similar setup here, um, we're starting with the twenty thousand, um, however, the frontage requirement, or the frontage here based on the tables that were handed out to you, that packet, the seventy, seventy-five, eighty, and I believe eighty-five as we, the last, done the latter two a lot sizes, they've end up violating our current um UDO with the three to one li- ratio, so we're, we're starting off um with a ninety foot frontage on the two thousand square foot lots. Um, that's the depiction here on the left-hand side of the screen, this ninety foot frontage um does put the depth, minimum depth um, to ensure that you have the twenty thousand square foot lot at a nice and fun two hundred and twenty-two feet point two-two. Um, there's gonna be roughly fifty foot of separation between homes, that'll range anywhere from twenty feet um, at the minimum to um, I believe it's right at ninety in between, uh, or sorry, up to eighty in between there. And then every four hundred and twenty feet traversed, you'll have nine homes. Um, I included the two half that are on the very right-hand most of that picture. With the next um image to the right, uh, those are depicted as a hundred foot frontage. Uh, with a hundred foot frontage, you have a two hundred foot depth lot, um, roughly sixty feet of ho- or sixty foot separation between homes and eight homes per every four hundred and twenty feet per traversed. Um, and then we jump up to the twenty-four thousand square foot lots with a ninety foot frontage. Um, the minimum lot, lot depth would be two hundred and sixty-seven uh feet roughly, fifty feet of separation between homes, nine homes every four hundred and twenty feet traveled. And then on the twenty-four thousand square foot lot at a hundred feet of frontage, lots are two hundred and forty feet deep, sixty foot separation, eight homes um for four hundred and twenty. I did have some better luck with representing what this looks like. Um, in Prescott Valley Viewpoint North, um, these lots, they're actually eight to ten thousand square foot lots with a ninety foot frontage here, um, and this is visually what this looks like here, you do have separation, you can't jump roof to roof here. Um, and then for a hundred foot frontage, this is another example from Prescott Valley Unit Nineteen subdivision. These are um roughly quarter acre lots here at a hundred foot frontage, um spaced out down the road. So you can kinda see what that looks like visually. Um, with that, I'd entertain some discussion here.
Would you ever have a sit?
Oh, you're off now.
Would you ever have a situation where you'd have a mixture of these?
As far as.
You know, the, 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 the mixture of the frontage, some shorter, some longer.
So you wouldn't have anything less than whatever minimum, so if you set a hundred foot minimum, you wouldn't have anything less than that, but you could have hundred, hundred twenty, hundred fifty, depending upon the characteristic of the lot.
That still is looking like for subdivision versus my ideas if somebody, you know, on neighborhood that's got one acre lots already pre-existing, if you wanted to put like a guest house or something in the back of your property and sell it off to one of your kids and have it split. You know, it's still, you know, whatever saying about a driveway going to the back, you need.
So you'd still encounter the utility issue with that and then.
Couldn't be on a shared well with the front house.
Well, you get into a little bit of um requirements as far as septic too, um, whether you're sharing septics or whatnot, that, that gets a little messy too. Um, of, of course, I'm not the best person to ta- discuss that, but just that's something to keep in mind, um.
Is that a situation like we had at Chino Meadows?
Could very well be. Um, and then two with a lot of these one acre subdivisions that we have existing, I mean, we do have a lot of one acre neighborhoods. Um, these quotations again, that were developed through land splits that aren't tied by a plat, but your Molly Rays, your Vista Grande, your Chino Gardens, um, they would not be able to take a benefit from this because they are a platted subdivision at one acre roughly minimum. In order to do something like that's before you, they'd have to rezone their property and they'd have to amend the plat, which would essentially get everybody in the neighborhood to give them the thumbs up on, which is a very daunting task to have happen. Um, so ju- just some things to keep in mind as far as whenever you start thinking about that.
I guess like over off of Reed between three and four, the two acre lots that run through between Eldridge and Reed.
Yeah.
I know several of those have been split from the two acre down to the one, even though it's plotted as two acre.
That goes back to that non-conforming lot here in Chino Valley.
So if we had the two hundred, the twenty-four thousand square foot lot and the hundred foot frontage, what does that do to a person with an acre? Are they able to split that in half?
They would not be able to, um, if they have a exactly one acre, an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty. Um, based on the twenty-four hundred square foot minimum, that would not be a feasible.
So we'd have to start at the twenty-two hundred, twenty-two thousand square foot?
Or twenty, yeah.
Okay.
If my advice or just opinion on this, if we were to, if you were to suggest going to accommodate a one acre split, probably go with the lower end because you're going to have the right of way issues, you're gonna have the street issues. So if you, if that is your goal to get somebody to split a one acre in half, um, some, to some level, always factor in the additional nuances.
Road's gonna come out of there.
Correct, correct.
But again, this really isn't set up to be, to help somebody with one acre, turn it into two lots.
No, this is for larger parcels.
Right, it's for setting up decent.
Yeah.
Subdivision.
Right.
That's why, that's why I feel the same as with quarter acre.
Okay.
Maximum square footage.
Yeah.
And hundred foot.
Okay.
So we need to s- separate the fact that neither one of these zoning changes are designed to help somebody with a one acre lot make a split.
Correct, I mean, there, there's always that ability to do so with that subdivision, but through a land division, um, that's just you hiring a surveyor to survey your property with a record of survey to cut your property up like the majority of Chino Valley has been done, this probably isn't gonna be very feasible for you because of the other requirements with utilities.
Roads what tips it over.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I don't know, but I wouldn't think there's a great number of one acre lot owners that are.
I will say the majority of people that we deal with at the counter are, they want one acre and greater.
Exactly, so I don't think it's really.
And I, I agree.
Not relevant.
I think that's why we need to just kinda leave that out of the thought process there.
Links like subdivision in Prescott Valley behind fries, those half acre lots.
Okay.
Are those hundred foot or are those?
Couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
There's a lot of properties in Prescott Valley that are over a hundred foot frontage, even if they're not a half acre.
Correct.
I think the hundred foot's where we should be at anyways. Whether it's twenty-four, twenty. Okay, so is, do we need to talk more about this or how does everybody feel about it?
I'm fine with this.
Twenty-two or twenty-four and fifty, I mean, twenty-four thousand and a hundred, gee, what?
Taking a step back.
Too many numbers.
Yep, the hundred foot frontage.
Okay.
Eight homes every four hundred and.
Twenty-four, one hundred.
Okay.
Twenty-two, one hundred.
Okay.
Twenty-four, one hundred.
Okay.
Twenty-four thousand, one hundred.
Gary?
I'd say the twenty-four thousand and the ninety.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go twenty-four thousand and the hundred. Um, what's your reasoning behind the ninety, Gary?
Um, this is prob- primarily gonna be used by uh subdividers for a number of acres and I'm thinking that it would be more sellable if they were able to get nine houses
To the acre.
To the acre, yeah.
It wouldn't be nine houses to the acre?
Well, nine, nine, nine houses to every four hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Feet uh frontage.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, it would make it more affordable if, you know.
But then you get back to the issue, people are complaining about too many houses and wells and water usage and stuff.
They can move out to Paulden.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
Okay, so it seems that the consensus and everybody can chime in after I sp- say this, but it seems that the consensus is twenty-four thousand square foot lots and one hundred lineal foot road frontage. But it seems that the consensus is twenty-four thousand square foot lots and one hundred lineal foot road frontage. Does that seem to be where we're at? Excuse me, so that's gonna be our recommendation.
Perfect. I think that was pretty painless, I appreciate that, guys. Um, do we want to tack on anything to that?
Pardon?
Do we want to add on any discussion tonight on this?
No, we'll, um, put some, put a draft ordinance together. We'd already started drafting an ordinance, but we didn't have these measurements. So we'll dust that off and we'll plug these numbers in. We'll, uh, make sure everything that we had before actually works with this. And we'll bring it back to you for, um, action.
Yep, in, in February.
Thank you.
And what's the status on the metal containers?
I have not moved forward with that, I've been working on the RFP for the general plan.
Yes, yeah, between this and the general plan.
That seems to be the, uh, the pinch point, so that's what I'm trying to get done.
All right.
Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
So we're done pretty much with F.
Yes, sir.
Allergies. So I have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's just.
Somebody sneezed today and we were getting her hair done and it was like everybody went like.